Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council for Monday, September 25th. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And Mayor Viera.
Here. Next, we will have the invocation by Pastor Adrian Condit, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
You know, I count it a privilege to be able to come to the City Council and give the invocation. I've done this a lot of times through the years. I've been in Series 50 years. So I've been down here a lot of times, but it's always been a privilege to me and an honor. Because our city has a lot of things to be prayed about. We have things going, happening, going on that we really need to pray. We have a world, a nation, that we need to pray about. Need to pray about what's happening and going on throughout our nation. We have a great nation. The things are happening that is sad to me and a little bit heartbreaking. But I'm telling you today or tonight, I'm not on Sunday morning right now, but I tell you what, we all need to really search our hearts and pray. Each one of us pray. So I'm going to ask you to bow your hearts with me as I lead in prayer tonight. Our Heavenly Father, we want to come to you this evening one more time today to just thank you, first of all, for your great love and your watch and care over this great country that we live in. And we also want to thank you, Father, for the watch and care over this city that we live in and have lived in for a lot of years. And Lord, we're proud to live in Series. And I thank God for Series. And I thank God for this mayor and this city council. I ask you, Father, to give them divine wisdom and knowledge to be able to cope with the problems that they face every week and every month throughout the year. I know it's a big job and they need divine intervention in their lives to be able to make good decisions and right decisions that help the people. So I ask you, God, to bless tonight, our city council, our mayor, our city officials, every person that works for this city. I pray that they love Series and are glad to be here. And I pray that you would overshadow our city and give favor, the favor of God, upon this city and upon those whose service we pray, in the most holy name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to say, God bless all you City Council. I wouldn't want to be sitting in your shoes. I thank you. Thank you for your service. God bless you. And before I get to preaching, I'm gonna get out of here. God bless all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this evening, we have no presentations, so we will move to citizens' communication to counsel on matters not included on the agenda. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to appointments to boards and commissions. We have none this evening. Conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the consent calendar items or new business items? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. At this time, is there anyone on the council that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion? Okay, is there any one of the...
Excuse me, I have nine, eleven, twelve, and fourteen.
Nine, eleven, twelve, and fourteen, you said?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone on the audience that would like any of the consent calendar items other than nine, eleven, twelve, and fourteen pulled? Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the council for direction on the other items.
Move to approve one, two, three, four, five, A, B, C, D, six, seven, eight, ten, and thirteen. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Okay, item number nine, resolution number 2017-080, authorizing the city manager to sign purchase orders for Country Ford Trucks, United Rentals, GCS Environmental Equipment Services, Inc., as part of the fleet replacement program, and authorize the finance director to execute a budget amendment. Councilmember Rhino?
Well, I have some concerns that we still have a structural deficit and that we haven't, apparently, we're still not learning not to overspend because I noticed there are five, six of the items or the vehicles that we want to purchase, we are going to be taking money out of the budget for 2019. And that's just a concern of mine, that why don't we, I mean, it doesn't look like there's some of that are additional vehicles. Why don't we wait until we have the money collected for the replacement rather than using the money that, using the money that we're gonna, that we're going to do in 2019?
It's coming out of Internal Service Fund, so there's already an account set up that is a separate account for the replacement of vehicles, and it's just an internal process of replacing those funds on an annual basis.
Right, but the way, but the way it read, it said the additional monies will be collected through the Internal Service Operations Budget for 2019.
Correct, so it will be...
But we don't actually have the money.
Well, there's a pool of money there that accounts for all of our vehicles, right? So every department pays into that pool every year.
Right.
Or when there's a little bit of a shortfall on a particular basis of replacement, it's collected at the next time to make sure that particular division is made whole on their accounting within that pool of money. But there's enough money there. It's not a general fund. There's enough money there to cover any of those, the ebb and flows of that process, right? Because a particular vehicle of what's being replaced at versus what its actual costs are, those change over time, and we use that to true up on an annual basis. Take it that doesn't satisfy you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll open up the public. Is there anyone that would, I'm sorry, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Klein?
So, when you say there's a pool of money there that everybody contributes to, does that include fire?
Fire battalion chief, not for the fire engines, but for the battalion vehicles and chief's vehicles, yes.
Okay, and then I did, I did, I did send you another question, but I did not see a response on this one. Why are we doing a budget amendment when there's already enough money in there to purchase those vehicles in the Fund 610?
Because what we asked for counsel was about $30,000 short.
Well, according, according to 2017-18 current appropriations, there's $676,704 in there, and the total vehicle cost for the, I believe it was like seven vehicles, was only $547,776, would, would, would give you a balance of $128,927.
And we're not done purchasing.
Pardon?
We're not done purchasing yet. Towards the end of the year, we're gonna come back to you with a lift truck and two PD cars.
And this year?
Yes.
But, well, I mean, so you're gonna need more money then, why, I mean, why would you do a budget amendment amount right now when you don't need it until when you go to purchase them and...
We wrote, I wrote the budget amendment to try to keep everything continuous and consistent. So when we, for example, as we, back in February when we got quotes on the cars, you know, we quoted out, Country Ford quoted us at 30,000. The cost of that car was 36,000. So we added all those up and the differences, and then there was a wagon trailer in there too that we needed for San Joaquin Valley purposes, for the airboard. So this is just a true up of all that. There's probably gonna be a budget amendment towards the end of the year as well, on the lift truck and the two PD cars, because those are more than what we budgeted for during this, what you approved in 1718.
It'd be no different than any capital purchase where we do an estimate in February in any capital project. We do an estimate based on our best information. When we get the actual quotes, sometimes those estimates are low, and we adjust it accordingly. So we could not do a budget amendment now and do a larger budget amendment at the next purchase, but we felt it was more consistent to make the true up now, and if we need another one at the next point in time, that'd be the appropriate time to do it.
But then, when you do a budget amendment and all its internal services, so you would be billing each separate department, I know I wrote them down, wastewater, streets, so you would be, a budget amendment for the separate departments?
So the budget amendment's coming out of the fleet fund, and we're collecting all those monies coming into the fleet fund. So if we bought a new, for example, the water truck, there's a dump truck in there for 70,000. That was a, a new added piece of equipment to the fleet. So the water division budget paid for that in the 1718 budget, if you look, on the line items. Some of those vehicles that were due to replacement, like I believe, if I remember, there was a streets vehicle in there. That streets vehicle, we collected over a 10-year period. We were about 15,000 short on the collection of it. And when Tim got quotes on it back in February, we were short on the quotes. There's where the budget amendment's coming for, out of the fleet fund. We'll collect that money in the 1819 budget for streets. That doesn't, that doesn't raise their overall budget. That's just, that's just a placeholder in there for the Internal Service Fund for fleet charges.
Well, I, I mean, with the way you're explaining it and the way the direction is going, to me, it seems sort of, for lack of better terms, pushing paper, but then trying to keep track of it, because when the, when the 1819 budget comes out and you do internal services and you got the water division that was short this year, okay, it's like, okay, how are you gonna show in a line item that you spent it in 1718? You know what I mean? And, and, and that, because you got one, two, three...
And at, and at budget time, I show all that to Toby. We go down all the spreadsheets for all the internal, internal services.
It is tracked internally so that we can, we know which each department is, is, you know, made whole in terms of what we're charging them on an annual basis, so that we're keeping this large pot of money allocated on an individual department basis.
Well, and I understand that, but that's the thing we got into it when we did the budget, and we, we had a couple of budget meetings, and I got together with, you know, and I, I told the chiefs and everybody else, you know, do you know what you're paying Internal Services for your bills from the, from, from maintenance? You know, and it, to me, you know, they, then, to me, it's their responsibility to keep it all on track, to make sure that their budget and everything goes thing. So, I mean, it's like, you know, just from what you're saying, I'm more lost than I'm, than I was when I was reading the thing and asking you, you know, and sending you the questions. So hopefully, the department heads will keep track of where they are Internal Services. Next year, when we sit down with the budget and we see where everything, line item and everything is, is done, we don't get into this, you know, situation where, you know, Internal Services, these departments don't know what they're getting billed for.
The departments know exactly what they're getting billed for, and this, we're talking about fleet. They have their specific requests of which vehicles are being replaced. You're mixing kind of facilities, charges versus fleet. The, the request for the vehicle replacements comes from the departments, and the Public Works Department is who takes all those together and manages that process. So the departments know exactly what vehicles are being put into the budget for replacement. The piece that is not known at the time the budget is put together is it was seven months ago. We didn't know the exact, we had an estimate for numbers, but now we know the exact numbers, and that's why we do a budget amendment, to true up an estimated number with an actual number.
Do you have any more questions?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Rhino, do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay, I'll look for...
I'll move to adopt resolution number 2017-080.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Okay, item number 11, resolution number 2017-082, awarding the construction contract for the 2017 pavement preservation project to American Pavement Systems, Inc., authorize a 10% contingency, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. Councilmember Rhino?
I just have one question. How much are we anticipating getting from Measure L this fiscal year?
Well, there's multiple components of Measure L. Are you asking total or just for pavement?
Just for the pavement.
Yeah, I believe it's 1.2 million. Does that sound right, Suzanne? 1.2 or 1.3?
For this fiscal year.
This fiscal year, and that includes, we'll actually probably get a little bit more than that because of the actual collection of Measure L sales tax started in April, but we didn't start seeing the money until July.
Okay, that was my only question.
It'll likely be a little more than what we expected, just because there's a couple months of carryover.
Okay. Any other questions, council? Anyone in the audience have any questions on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll look for direction.
Move to adopt resolution number 2017-82.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Okay, item number 12, resolution number 2017-083, awarding the construction contract for the Mitchell Road overlay, Phase 4, STPL 5241, parentheses, oh, five, one, to George Reed, Inc., authorize a 10% contingency, approve the budget amendment, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. Councilmember Rhino?
This will involve rubberized asphalt overlay of Mitchell from roading to just north of Service Road. My question is, what happens when the Walmart supercenter starts developing? Will they have to be cutting into that newly paved road?
We are coordinating with Walmart to ensure that that does not happen. So the key is that the timing of this is not, we will not be able to get the pavement down within the current weather period. They'll be able to do some of the digouts and some of the repairs, but they actually won't be able to get the overlay put down because of temperatures until spring. So we are confident they will have all the information from Walmart by that point in time, and anything that's necessary to be under the pavement will be installed prior to that to ensure that we don't have to cut into that street again.
As long as we're sure of that, then I would be okay with this contract.
One of the key issues with the timing associated with this is the federal project and the federal funding. By awarding the project, we kind of stop the clock as we're getting kind of the end of our allocation of these funds. The federal funding process, we picked this project for, almost four years ago, you know, with the expectation that Walmart would be done by now, but just the way time has worked, we, we kind of add a time in terms of being able to stretch this project any further. But by awarding it now, we kind of stop that clock, and knowing that we have another six months of a window before we're actually putting the pavement down, and we're confident that we'll be able to coordinate those efforts to ensure that we're not, it's the last thing that staff needs to do is obviously have to cut a street twice.
And you, you have been in contact with them, Walmart?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, they know exactly, and they're, they're definitely on the same page, and that's their interest as well, because they recognize when we work together, we end up with a better product.
Any other questions? Okay, is there any questions in the audience? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for direction.
Resolution, move to adopt resolution number 2017-83.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Okay, item number 14, resolution number 2017-085, approving list of projects to be funded with Senate Bill SB1, the Road Repair and Accounting Act of 2017, and incorporating the list of projects to appropriate revenues and expenditures into the fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget. Councilmember Rhino?
This is my same question. I'm concerned that if we reconstruct Mitchell Road from Highway 99 to Service Road, that Walmart will cut into it.
Yeah, this one's actually a little bit easier in the fact that it's south of where the Walmart is, and Walmart actually has a condition to participate in this overall project. So we've already had communications with their engineer to get them to participate as a cost share ultimately for the award of that project. Similar kind of an issue with that particular project, we've opened the bids, it's the same contractor, which makes for a really nice consistency with, such that we can coordinate and make sure that this happens in essence seamlessly, and that all of those improvements are in and underground and not have to cut the street again.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Will any of this be impacted by the Mitchell Road, Service Road interchange?
This is being built consistent with that overall design.
Okay. Okay, is there anyone in the audience that has any comments on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for direction.
Move to adopt resolution number 2017-85.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Okay, we will move on to no, excuse me, unfinished business, which we have none this evening. Public hearing, we also have none. New business, we have two items. The first item, item number 15, resolution number 2017-086, approving termination of agreement with the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority, SJVIA, effective at the end of the 2017 health plan year, December 2031, 2017.
Mayor and council, hopefully the staff report is fairly self-explanatory. We have been in, we've had an agreement with the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority or the SJVIA since 2013 to participate in a pool. It's a large member pool of other public agencies for our health insurance. For a number of years, it was a very beneficial relationship. We, we received fair renewals that were single-digit. Some of you may be aware, in the past, prior to our joining SJVIA, we had years of double-digit increases as well as carrier changes all the time. This offered us some stability. However, during last year, it became apparent that there were some issues going on with the SJVIA. Staff attended a number of their meetings beginning about last spring. Essentially, they're, they're in a financial crisis due to some cash flow issues that they had due to some, the way they had the, the payments planned from the two founding members. They were also using the reserves at a pretty hefty pace. We had a, the group itself, the entire pool, had a, a bad claims year that was noticed probably late 2015. So all of these things kind of culminated in the two founding members of the SJVIA, which are Counties of Fresno and Tulare, essentially loaning the SJVIA several millions of dollars, and that number has continued to grow. Staff became concerned with the viability of the SJVIA at that point and did start looking for some other options. However, before the, for the 2017 renewal, which happened last summer, the board actually kind of took its first step away from its, its foundation, which is we are a pool, we share experience and risk, and they approved a renewal that essentially favored the two founding members for the PPO plan, and the, all the other member agencies received about a 14% higher premium renewal for the PPO. That action resulted in 20 of the 23 other members, of the non-founding members, leaving the pool effective this calendar year. That had an extremely detrimental effect to the, the SJVIA, because due to the type of agreements that we have, those agencies basically left behind their outstanding claims with the SJVIA, and they were estimated somewhere between $2 and $3 million. Those obligations remain, the SJVIA's essentially with the founding members. However, the problems have continued, and during this year's renewals, the, the SJVIA's broker actually recommended exchanging the HMO plan for an EPO plan. They also presented the renewal rates in July. Those renewals were fairly easy to swallow. They recommended about a 5.1 increase for the EPO and a 3.6% increase for the PPO for the non-founding members. The board rejected that renewal proposal and instead asked that the broker experience rate the other members and unpool the rates. That resulted in the renewals that were proposed in August with increases of 36.8% for the EPO and a 4.5% increase for the PPO for all of the non-founding members. That total increase is roughly 25.1% for the non-founding members. Conversely, the two founding members received only a 1.9 and a 3.3% increase. Specifically, the County of Fresno's EPO renewal was proposed with no increase at all. Additionally, the Kaiser Plan that's offered, the recommendation had been for a reduction of 4% in the premium, and the board instead approved maintaining the rate at the 2017 level. All of this pretty much culminated in us deciding that this is not a healthy relationship for the city to be in. The pool is actually not behaving like a pool anymore. There is no shared risk. They're insulating the two founding members, and this is no longer beneficial for the city. So the, the premium increases that they've proposed, as you see in the report, amount to about 3/4 of a million dollars in increased costs, and those are going to be shouldered mainly by our employees in out-of-pocket costs for their premiums. The, about 70% of our employees are actually enrolled in the HMO plan, which is where the highest increase is proposed, and now the, the SJVIA's membership is primarily made up of the two founding members. Only, only about 3% of us are now the other agencies. Our Employee Benefits Advisory Committee actually convened recently, and they reviewed the, the renewal from SJVIA, and they had a unanimous recommendation that we do leave the SJVIA at the end of this plan year. We do have some timelines to deal with. The SJVIA normally has a 120-day notice requirement. However, due to the late timing of their adopting the renewal rates and the timing for them to get our agreements out to us, they've shortened it to 90 days. However, that gives us until the end of this month to notify them of our termination in writing. We also have administratively to deal with an open enrollment that staff has to do. We need enough time to get our new plans in order. The advisory committee has also looked at the proposals that our brokers put together for us. They've made their recommendation to the city manager for his decision. We need to get that ball rolling as well, so we do need to make a decision about leaving the SJVIA tonight so that we can notify them before the end of this month.
Okay.
Any questions?
Are there any questions? Okay, no. At this time, I will open up to the public. Anyone that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and direction. Mr. Wells?
Just wanted to make mention, I see several of our Eback, Employee Benefit Advisory Committee here in the audience. I just would like them to stand up for, just so the council can recognize those folks who helped participate in this process. I know they don't want to, but I want to recognize their hard work and efforts in understanding a complicated, difficult topic, reaching out to their peers, and this, this effort has been very beneficial to have a, a better relationship. We heard several times through this process of transparency, the employees recognizing and appreciating that we're taking some efforts to try and get this at a peer level. It, it would seem like it was being better received, this information. Obviously, we didn't, we aren't able to touch every employee in the organization, but at least expanding the network and conversation on, you know, obviously, a circumstance that affects all of our employees and how the benefits will be changing. So I wanted to take a minute to make sure we recognize their efforts.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any comments or questions or direction?
I move to approve the resolution terminating the agreement with the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority for medical benefits effective the end of 2017 health plan year, December 31st, 2017.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, item number sixteen, resolution number two thousand seventeen dash oh eight seven, directing staff to schedule a public hearing to consider necessary adjustments to fees for water service and to provide notice of the public hearing and establish rules for counting protests. Amy?
Good evening, mayor and council. At the last meeting, we provided a, a, uh, very detailed analysis of the rates and the revenue, rates and expenditures for the water system in the upcoming years due to wellhead treatment and surface water projects. Uh, with that said, we are recommending that you authorize staff to schedule the public hearing, consider the proposed adjustments to the rates, and mail the notes. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? So, the direction, just for clarification, is just to set the public hearing, so we're not discussing the rates tonight, we're just setting the public hearing.
Setting the hearing, though the November thirteenth is the plan for the hearing day.
Okay, okay. At this time, um, I'm gonna go ahead, if there aren't any questions, I'll open it up for the general public, uh, Mr. Wells?
Yeah, just wanted to, um, add a couple clarifying statements from last, last time. We had talked about a couple different dates for when that hearing would be set, um, whether it was gonna be November twenty-seventh or November thirteenth. Uh, the forty-five-day window, we felt to be more appropriate to try and get that before the Thanksgiving holiday, so November thirteenth was the date that was chosen. That means getting those notices mailed out by the end of this week. Um, and one thing I wanted to stress, I know in our last conversation, and, um, was, you know, the, the need on the capital side for the surface water project. Um, I know council is very well aware, but, um, in hearing some communicate, communication in the community over the last couple of weeks, you know, it'll think it was as clear about, you know, what's driving this water rate increase is our, um, our need to move away from a groundwater-only system to a conjunctive system that uses surface water, and that surface water plant is expensive, but it provides us the reliability and sustainability for the long-term future. Very painful, yes, but this is something that is absolute critical to our long-term, uh, sustainability as a, uh, the ability to deliver safe drinking water that meets all of the state and federal standards. So, I think that's something that's critically important in this overall process, to ensure that this is painful, a forty percent increase is something that no one likes or takes lightly. Um, and we are pursuing every feasible possible alternative for other funding sources, and we did get some recent good news on some legislation at the state level, uh, that may provide some funding for this project over its life that will help set those rates, um, lower, but again, what the action you would be starting this evening is setting the Prop two-eighteen process, taking any comments to that process, um, setting the worst-case, uh, the rates. Obviously, any savings we get in the project estimate, any other funding sources we get, any reduction in the loan process because we're pursuing a state revolving fund loan at a low interest rate, all of those things are critically important, uh, to ensure that we deliver the best project at the best price to meet the needs of our community for the long term.
Okay, Councilmember Rhino?
I understand why we need to have the water rate increases, and I'm not happy about it either because I live in the city, but can, can't we, um, move out the implementation so you don't have forty percent hit the first year? Can't we do that?
Well, we, we can, it just pushes out the delivery date for the surface water project. You need that capital on the front end, uh, those monies are really necessary for the design process. We're pursuing a design-build process, so there's some pretty heavy front-end capital expenditures. Um, plus, we need to get our system ready for that, so we need the capital to make sure our improvements are in place so that when that surface water, uh, is delivered at a tank, which we need to build at River Bluff Park, um, that the system downstream for that tank, that tank is sufficient to deliver that water. In addition, we also have challenges with TCP. So, as the council is aware of, that particular contaminant is affecting over half of our municipal well system. We have to make improvements for those wells today in order to have our water system be viable and sustainable until the surface water project. And even under an expedited process, surface water project is not functioning until two thousand twenty-two. We need to have these well improvements done, and that's, and then, and that's where the capital comes from, i.e. money, on the front end to make those improvements. So, could it be done? Yes, but there's a risk associated with stretching those costs out and smoothing the curve out from the steep because we need those capital dollars to make improvements to the system today. We really can't wait any longer, unfortunately, to make those improvements. And we have to make the improvements whether we do the surface water project or not. For the most part, they're needed today regardless of whether we do surface water project. So, there's a, there's a two-part capital piece. Existing infrastructure that's necessary today to meet water quality standards and the, the longer-term capital projects for the surface water.
Do we, do we have another fund that we could borrow from?
We could potentially borrow from the sewer fund, um, that, that is an option. Uh, there is a balance there, we try to stay away from that as best we can, but-
Well, we borrow from everything else, come on.
Not, we really haven't in the past three years, uh, other than the reserve, but we haven't borrowed from intra-fund, uh, in a number of years. Um, I think the last time we did that was probably two thousand and twelve?
Well, I, I think if we had the ability to borrow, and it would save the rate payers from being hit with a forty percent the first year.
It really doesn't save them though, because that cost is still there, you have to pay it back.
Well, you have to pay it back, but you can't smooth it out and pay it over time.
There's not enough of a change there to make a difference. Right, the capital dollar that we need upfront, I don't believe a, a million or two, um, savings from the sewer is going to make, uh, the difference between forty percent and thirty-seven percent. And we're likely need to do that potential borrowing anyways for some of the surface water projects that are coming sooner rather than later. The first aspect, uh, is the wet well construction, which is the first piece, which is expected to be under construction about this time next year, if not sooner. Um, and that is currently, our share would be around three million dollars, and that is not included in the current rate structure. So, we would likely need to borrow from the sewer or work out payment range with, with our partner, uh, City of Turlock, for that regardless with the rates as they're currently shown.
So, you're saying that even if we borrowed money from sewer, the rate payers would still have a thirty percent, thirty-seven percent increase?
Just an estimate, I haven't run those numbers, but it's probably somewhere in that range, and seeing Jeremy Nada saying it. We've looked at those, the sensitivity of that capital, um, and if, remember from the rate pages and where projects hit is really what drives that, and there's several of those projects that need to be done in the first two years, and it's a pretty significant capital expenditure program.
Any other questions?
No.
I think, just to piggyback on, uh, some comments that, um, Mr. Wells made, um, we're doing everything that we can to try to find, um, grant money, and although he didn't throw out the amount, and I don't know if I should, um, I'm going to anyway, and we're hopeful that, working with our legislators, that, um, we may have secured, you know, thirty million dollars for the project, um, or somewhere thereabouts. And we will continue to see what we can do. Um, you know, obviously, the state is, is supportive of this as, as well as other things, and this is a truly a regional project where, you know, both Turlock and Ceres are trying to, um, you know, secure our water system because as I've said once and I've said a hundred times, with the stroke of a pen in Sacramento, our groundwater wells could all be out of compliance, and we would be spending a tremendous amount of money to try to play catch-up on that. And so, um, it, it's imperative, uh, even though it is painful, that we, um, in my opinion, give ourselves as many avenues to have, um, a safe, reliable drinking water, um, system that, uh, ensures that our residents have, um, you know, the same quality of life that they experience today, um, but is becoming more and more challenging to, uh, to keep up with. So, at this time, I'm going to open this up to the public, and just as a reminder, the only thing we're giving direction on, and really the only thing that we can be discussing tonight, is whether you support setting a public hearing or not. Um, because, uh, we, we're not making any decisions or doing anything, it's just to start the process. So, at this point, I'll open it up to the public for anyone that would like to speak in favor or against setting a public hearing.
Councilmembers and mayor, uh, I had an opportunity to review the, the rate study, and I do have, uh, in looking at this, is that the revenue projections, it is assuming that everyone continues to use the same amount of water even though we are doing a substantial rate increase. So, I think that, that on the revenue side, it is being very, uh, generous in assuming that when we do an eighty percent increase over two years, that no one changes how much water they're using. So, that you're, are you really going to generate a hundred percent revenue collection on all of these? And I would gather that, uh, you're probably going to have at least a ten percent reduction, and when you're looking at twelve million to seventeen million dollars, that puts any excess revenues that you're looking at into negative. So, you're really going to be not collecting as much revenue as you're estimating. The other, as I was looking at the, uh, the share of the operations of the-
Again, Albert, this is just, do you want the public, we'll get into, you can bring all these questions up when we're discussing. Uh, this is just, do you want the public hearing or not?
I'd say that it goes forward, the, the issue is, are we under, also underestimating costs? And, and so, is, it's nice, nice, uh, worksheet that's, and process that has been done, but are the numbers really going to, is the revenue that's being generated, is it really going to provide sufficient revenue? And that's, that's my concern.
And, and that will, will be a question that we can address or answer when we talk about the, the whole thing.
No problem.
Okay, thank you.
Just to provide a little bit of clarification, one of the, one of the drivers of the, the rate change as we structure this is that balancing act between the fixed amount that you pay and the variable amount, being the fix, fix being the base where they use any, you know, any water at all, and then the, uh, per gallon charge. So, there's a balance there, trying to get to exactly what Albert was indicating, trying to, it's a crystal ball, I mean, as Albert knows, we're, we're, we're taking estimate, but at the same time, we don't have any data to really show us what the consumption's going to change, because our past experience is very different because we just came through a drought, we just came through a really significant effort of, uh, conservation. So, what happens in the future is still somewhat of a crystal ball, so, I mean, Albert makes some really good points, but it, you've got to make some assumptions and some estimates, um, and you're gonna be right on some, gonna be wrong on some, but you've got to find something that's reasonable that we can all stand behind and recognize. You know, we, we probably make adjustments, we, we try to figure out what is, in essence, the worst case. We don't want to put ourselves in a situation, we're coming back again at the end of five years. But, um, you know, fortunately, we've been, we've had good experience with our rate consultant, um, in the past. This is the third time they've done this for us, and we're pretty comfortable with their approaches and estimations, so, we're confident that, uh, this is, you know, a really good effort, and we'll, we'll continue to look at those numbers and make sure, uh, as we come back, we'll have, um, so, we'll have the, you know, a little more detail on exactly how those projections will look.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak in either, uh, favor or opposition to setting a public hearing?
John Warren, I would encourage the council to set a date for the public hearing. A five-year time span to get this project up and running is a long time. And all we're gonna do is push it down the road. Surface water is something that we're going to need, we can't keep pumping it out of the ground. So, a, a, a fix to the system is necessary, and we need to move forward and do that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for direction.
Move for approval, resolution number two thousand seventeen dash eighty-seven.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, can we have the roll call vote please?
Councilmember DeRocci?
Yes.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
And Mayor Biara?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to council member referrals. Um, uh, is there any, anyone on the council that would like to have an item, um, placed on a future agenda? Councilmember Rhino?
Toby, do we have an update of when we'll be discussing vehicles parked on front yards?
Don't have a current schedule yet, based on the number of items that we currently have on the agenda. I would suspect it's probably end of November at the current timeframe.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I do have a question. You know, prior to me getting on the city council, we used to have study, there used to be study sessions, and it used to be like one Tuesday or one Thursday a month. Then, when I got on the city council, we changed our meeting time to six o'clock to accommodate some things, and there was supposed to be, uh, an understanding that we would also incorporate a study sessions, you know, once a month.
They're on the agenda item, that's discussion items. That's what we changed, study session, we changed to discussion items. It's on every agenda.
But it, it seems like more and more, there's a lot more things that are coming before the city council, you know, for discussions, and, uh, I don't think they're moving fast enough to get things, you know, addressed.
What do you mean by you don't think they're moving fast enough to get things?
Well, we, you know, we, we've, we've, you know, this, this, this thing with the, the blight, the, the, the signs, the, uh, different things like that, where we can put them and, and, and dress them to, to get them, to get them part of the general fund. Um, you know, uh, you know, I just, I just think that, you know, when I, I ask for something to be requested to be on the, on the agenda, then all of a sudden, it's, it's like two months out.
Council sets the priorities, if you'd like us to move items up, I just need three votes to tell me which is a priority. Everything can't be a priority, we have a number of items that are critically important. Water rates, general plan, those items are driving our overall agendas for the next couple of months. If council would like to put those off and push those out further, we'd be happy to do that, but I just need three of you to tell me which are the higher priorities, and we'll be happy to bring those forward.
Yeah, and I, and I, memory should be correct, the reason that we took direction was to add the extra hour to the councilman, the start time, so that we could use that period of time for discussion, so that we could address the items like we were addressing in the, in the-
As part of the regular, regular scheduled council.
So, I, I guess, if, uh, do you feel there's not enough adequate time, is that what?
Well, I, I, sometimes I think that maybe, you know, looking at the agenda tonight, you know, there might have been one or two items that could have been added to it. You know?
Okay. I mean, again, I, I guess-
Staff time is your, that's what I heard.
Yeah, we are, we are a limited staff, we have the, the priorities that have already been set by this council that we're trying to deliver and bring to the council. Um, again, if, if those priorities aren't meeting the needs of the council, then provide me some direction of which is a higher priority, and we'll, we'll change those priorities.
You, you know, Toby, what might help, help is, you know, talking about how things are now, right? I know there's some items coming up, maybe we can just get reminded once in a while, maybe we could place the-
Coming items?
Yeah, yeah, coming items, maybe that would help, so, you know, we can see what's coming. Mike, and maybe we do need to change, you know, maybe in that, those coming items, maybe we say, well, this is more important, let's move it to here. You know, maybe that would help.
So, is, is that, I mean, with Councilmember Lane's suggestion, I think that's a great idea.
It's a list that I already have, but if you want me to share with council, you'd be happy to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else who'd like an item placed on a future agenda? Okay, uh, reports, I have nothing to report, Councilmember Rhino?
Nothing tonight.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Nothing.
Councilmember Lane?
Uh, Lake Conference was, uh, actually a couple of weeks ago, and the biggest turnout since two thousand ten, I believe it was. Huge, almost two thousand attended the, uh, Lake Conference this year, so, it's a big conference. In fact, um, I only seen Linda one time walking down the sidewalk, trying to holler at you. You were busy, we were all busy going different directions, but there were so many people, but, uh, anyway, um, yeah, we did come out with some good news, sitting down with, uh, our legislators and that sort of thing, so, hopefully, I know we didn't talk about the bill, I don't know if we should or not, but I guess it really doesn't matter. It's, um, SB five. And the governor's still gotta sign it, but one of our legislators, I won't, I won't say who it is right now. I can say who it is, Heath Flora, um, who, one of his, his representatives in the audience, Cooper Condon. But, uh, anyway, he got thirty million dollars in this bill and, um, for a surface water treatment plant. But again, it's a SB five, so it's something the governor's gotta sign, and then I think nineteen as a bond measure.
Maybe June of, uh, twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen, okay, twenty eighteen, so, if all goes well, that's always good news, and talking about some interest-free loans and that sort of thing, so, um, our legislators are doing some great work for us, so, we want to thank them for that too and recognize that.
Okay, Councilmember DeRocci?
Nothing.
Okay, Suzanne?
Nothing, mayor.
Tom?
Nothing, mayor.
Mr. Wells?
Reminder that our Measure H committee does have a vacancy, uh, we are, have been advertising that on our website. Anyone who's interested in, um, submitting for that application, uh, they are on our website, you can pick them up at City Hall, they do the application period- They do, the application period closes this Friday at 5:00. So, if you know of anybody who's interested, please pass that information along to them. Also attended League Conference, felt it was very, very good conference this year, and enjoyed the speakers, and picked up a lot of good information, and always great to commiserate or find other solutions that other cities are running into across the states. That was a great conference.
Okay. Tom?
Nothing, sir.
Daryl?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick update on Forest Street. Looks like we're about 65% done, finishing up the concrete over the next week or two, and preparing for the pavers to come in and resetting the pavers. We're pushing our contractor to go a little bit faster. He's going to be working about 10 hours a day, six days a week. We want to beat that date that we've set and try to get done a little bit earlier.
So, your end date is?
We're telling everybody we're going to beat Thanksgiving.
Okay. All right. Brent?
Nothing.
Steve? I know you had something.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Steve Hallam, Economic Development, Rio, Breathe Development Manager. I just wanted to let the community know, remind them that next Thursday, October 5th, there will be an upcoming small business tax seminar that will be held right here at the Ceres Community Center. It's presented by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. They were formerly known as the Board of Equalization, and it's co-sponsored by Senator de Canelo, Assemblyman Gray, and of course, the City of Ceres. And there's some great topics for small businesses, tips to avoid on common sales and use tax problems, better business through better records, looking at different forms of business ownership. It begins at 8:30, goes to noon. So far, 170 registrants have signed up to attend, so it sounds like a good turnout. And again, that's next Thursday, 8:30 here at the Ceres Community Center. It's free for all of our small business owners.
That's great. Thank you. Bettina? No. Jeremy? Nothing. Mike? Anything? Supervisor DiMartini? Anything? Nothing. Okay. All right, with that, we will move to closed session. We have two items, one conference with labor negotiator and a conference with real proper, property negotiator. Thank you.